The 17th, 2023. So this meeting is officially called to order. As usual, we will start with our Chaplain Prayer and pledges. And we are welcoming back Marcela Jenkins, who's been through some pretty scary health issues, but she's back. She's here. And we are thankful you're back. So if you all would please come forward and lead us in prayer and the pledges.
Giving honor to our mayor and to the members of the City Council, let's pray. Father in heaven, in the name of Jesus, we bow before you, the Author and Finisher of our faith, to say thank you for another day that you have made. We ask you, Lord, to please incline your ear and hear our prayer. Endow the council with wisdom and knowledge and revelation, understanding and the ability to impart the business of the city with excellence as unto you. I pray, Father, that as we enter into Police Week, that we stop to remember the ultimate sacrifice paid by police officers who died in the line of duty. We thank you for their families, and we ask you to bless each and every one of our law enforcement people throughout Tom Green County. We thank you, Father, for everyone that's gathered here in the City Council chambers, and we pray that, Lord, we become a community even better than where we are today. In Jesus' name, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, and one in heaven.
Honor to Texas flag.
I pledge allegiance to be Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
We will now do our proclamations, which we have four today. So let me come down there, and we will get started. Our first proclamation today is the Texas Businesswomen of San Angelo Day. And I know we have many of you here in the audience today, so please come forward. You're fine now, because we're going to go up front and have a picture in a little bit. So you're all right. The Texas Businesswomen of San Angelo, or TBW, formerly known as the Business and Professional Women of San Angelo, or BPDW, celebrates 100 years of existence on May 25, 2023. TBW is dedicated to providing a safe, supportive environment for women to grow and succeed through leadership training and networking. Mrs. Ruth Matthews Stein of Amarillo and Mrs. Brown F. Lee organized the original San Angelo Business and Professional Women's on May 25, 1923. They chartered the club with 20 members and elected Mrs. Sadie Bullware, the first president. These women represented different career fields and businesses during a time when few organizations existed for women. These women came together to create opportunities for women of future generations in the San Angelo area. In 1938, BPDW established an educational loan fund that later became the Ida Gerber Memorial Scholarship Fund. The members also advocated, lobbied, and assisted in passing the Equal Rights Amendment to the Texas Constitution in 1972. The San Angelo BPDW transitioned to the Texas Businesswomen of San Angelo in 2010 and remains an active organization in San Angelo by contributing to other local nonprofit organizations. Organizations and events supported by TBW include MD Anderson Cancer Center, Christmas at Old Fort Concho, Adopt a Spot, Back to School Event, Local Family Shelter, Rainbow Room, and Communicating with Confidence Program. Therefore, I, Brenda Gunter, Mayor of the City of San Angelo, Texas, on behalf of the City Council, do hereby proclaim May 25, 2023, as Texas Businesswomen of San Angelo Day in San Angelo, Texas, and encourage all citizens of San Angelo to pay tribute to the hardworking women of our great city by recognizing their invaluable expertise, impressive drive, and ingenuity in achieving the highest levels of success. Congratulations.
Thank you so much.
Please offer some words.
Thank you so much, Mayor. This is such an honor, and what we like to coin the phrase as herstory in San Angelo and for all women, the strides that women have made over the years. If you can just imagine what women look, what our organization looked like in the early 1920s, 1923, what San Angelo looked like. So the women who have fought and have blazed the trails before us is why we are here today celebrating this honor. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's have a picture. Please come forward. A century ago, on May 28, 1923, an oil well in west Texas known as Santa Rita Well Number One changed the course of the oil industry. Permian Basin Petroleum Association has recognized the discovery of Santa Rita Well Number One as, quote, "the well that launched the Permian." The drilling rig itself was brought to the site by train and came through what is now the Santa Fe Depot. Before the oil industry moved to Midland in the mid and late 1920s, San Angelo was transformed into a metropolitan area. It is reported that about 43 oil companies had offices in San Angelo during the early days of the boom spawned by Santa Rita Well Number One. The character and appearance of downtown San Angelo was transformed from a dusty, wooden frontier town to a brick-and-mortar sophisticated city with modern amenities, including a new city hall and county courthouse, still in use today. Oil executives brought to San Angelo by Santa Rita Well Number One built the Santa Rita area for their families. Santa Rita Well Number One leasing rights were established as university land set aside by the State of Texas for the financing of the University of Texas and later Texas A&M University. Much of the original drilling equipment now resides on the University of Texas Austin campus, a testimony to the well's importance to the UT system. Therefore, I, Brenda Gunter, Mayor of the City of San Angelo, Texas, on behalf of the City Council, do hereby proclaim May 28, 2023, as the 100th Anniversary Celebration of Santa Rita Well Number One.
David Alexander, this is Brandy Ellis. I'm representing the chicken farm. We're having a reunion of people that were involved in the, for family and friends associated with Santa Rita Number One. And that's Sunday afternoon, May 28. Would be 100 years from that 1923 day. And so, where there's going to be music and food, with food trucks, and local folks being involved, and people coming from Big Lake and coming around. And we have a new owner of the chicken farm, so graciously allowing us to use her facility. And that's chastity right there, taking our picture. And so, we're mainly, Brandy organized the group that got together and set this thing up. And so, they're, they all have Big Lake ties and Texoma ties. That's the people that are, that will be coming. It's also open to the public, if you want to come out, Sunday afternoon. One of the groups playing is T. Gosney, Thornton and the Old Hat Band. And T.'s father, Mr. Gosney, worked in Texoma back in, he wasn't there in 1923, but he worked there while Texoma was still a booming town. So we're, we have some flyers back there. You're welcome to see them. But we're happy to celebrate 100 years of Santa Rita Number One. It's a big deal oil well. Thank you. And we didn't step on Big Lake's toes. We got permission to do our, to do this reunion. They're doing theirs July 1. It's a big deal, Santa Rita Days in Big Lake. 5,000 to 10,000 people show up for that. But we also, Dell and Monica, on Saturday, the museum will be open, the Railway Museum will be open 12 to 5. And trains were a big deal to that. They were bringing people, I trained from all over, driving them, taking them out to the well to see the well in Texoma back in the day. So, and then another music person is Cindy Jordan, who will be here. She wrote the book Pearl. It has to do with the 20s on Concho Avenue at places like Miss Hattie's. I think there may be a restaurant there now or something. But, so anyway, we'll have some fun. Come out.
Let's have a picture. Leave these here, if you would. Take your poster. If you all would come forward. The month of May is dedicated to National Historic Preservation Month. Preservation is an important course of action for us to transmit our understanding of the past to future generations. Our city's history has many facets. San Angelo is home to several historic landmarks and historic properties. In fact, Tom Green County has a total of 69 listings on the National Register of Historic Places. Fort Concho National Historic Landmark tells a story of the protection of frontier settlements quelling the hostile threats in the area during the 1800s. The Railway Museum of San Angelo carries history of an economical transportation route connecting lucrative markets of the Orient through San Angelo. Overall, our cultural district and historic downtown holds evidence of many Western heritage sites now sought out as tourist attractions. National and local organizations recognize Historic Preservation Month by demonstrating all the social and economic benefits of historic places and people saving places. Therefore, I, Brenda Gunter, Mayor of the City of San Angelo, Texas, on behalf of the City Council, do hereby proclaim the month of May as Historic Preservation Month in San Angelo, Texas, and thank our local historic preservation groups and passionate individuals who have preserved our city's prominent history.
Good morning. I'm Monica Ramos, Assistant Director of Downtown San Angelo, Inc. As the proclamation stated, downtown and the Cultural Arts District are home to San Angelo's most prized historic sites. Fort Concho National Historic Landmark is currently listed as a distinctive destination on savingplaces.org, which is a part of the National Trust for Historic Preservation. What historic preservation means to me is saving a historic site or place, even if it's not fully restored back to its original condition. Take a look around downtown. Take a walk. Take notice of the historic buildings, the ornate detail, the architecture. The beauty of these sites is so wonderful. It's just not the same today as it was then. The culture and, again, the beauty are just notable and attractions to San Angelo. There's thought of moving forward and progression, and all this can be included in historic preservation when rehabilitating a property and bringing modern flair. A good example of this would be Old Central Firehouse Pizzeria and Tap Room. So I hope that you all stand behind us, stand behind historic preservation as we do, and help save our history for our future generations to come.
Dell?
I'll just say that we're privileged as an organization to be the lead advocate for historic preservation. The foundation of the Main Street program is historic preservation. So we're very privileged and honored that, to be able to represent our community in that way. Thank you.
Do we have anyone in the audience to come forward and accept this proclamation? National Older Americans Month is celebrated in May to recognize the contributions and achievements of adults 60 years of age and over in our society. Older adults in San Angelo are the roots from which our community grows, who bestow gifts of wisdom and insight upon younger generations and strengthen the bonds between neighbors to create a better place to live. An increasing number of adults are reaching retirement age and remaining strong and active for longer than ever before. The older adults in San Angelo deserve recognition for the contributions they have made and will continue to make to the culture, economy, and character of our community. The Texas Silver Haired Legislatures, TSHL, is a nonprofit organization that represents the interests of older citizens in Texas by advocating for legislation that enhances their quality of life. TSHL works closely with the Concho Valley Area Agency on Aging, or AAAA, a regional organization that provides services and resources to older adults and their families in the Tom Green County area. We urge elected officials and policymakers to work with organizations like TSHL and AAAA to develop and implement policies that address the unique needs of older adults and promote their social, economic, and physical well-being. Therefore, I, Brenda Gunter, Mayor of the City of San Angelo, Texas, on behalf of the City Council, do hereby proclaim the month of May as National Older Americans Month in San Angelo, Texas, and encourage all citizens to participate in National Older Americans Month activities and honor the valuable contributions of older adults to our society. Thank you. Issues or concerns not on the regular agenda may be raised by the public at this time. Citizens should speak from the podium, address all comments to the Diaz, begin by stating their name and address or single-member district number, and limit their remarks to less than three minutes. Do we have anyone in the audience who would like to offer public comment? I would like to start by offering some public comment, if I could. I want to start today by encouraging every citizen to file a protest with the appraisal district if you believe your 2023 tax appraisal of your property is valued dramatically higher than your 2022 appraised value. Unquestionably, these new appraisals have been shockingly higher than anyone could possibly anticipate. I am working with Drew Darby, hopefully, to come up with a plan that will be acceptable to the appraisal district and the state comptroller. But remember this, Drew has no authority, I have no authority, and Tyler Johnson at the Tom Green County Appraisal District reports to the comptroller, not to the city and not to the county. His boss is the state comptroller. As mayor, as a city, we have no authority over the Tom Green Appraisal District or the state comptroller. I would encourage citizens to write to contact the state comptroller, as he is the person who controls the appraisal district. That being said, I will work with our state legislators to try to find a way to address these disastrous appraisals. That does not mean in any way I have the power or the ability to affect any of the appraisals. But what we do want to do is to make sure our state representatives, as well as the state comptroller and the appraisal district, understands the dramatic stress that these appraisals have added to our citizens. We do not know what parameters were put into the system that created the algorithms. Our land prices do not in any way correlate to the I-35 corridor land prices. Our costs of construction do not emulate to the I-35 corridor prices. Factors such as inflation, bidding wars, supply chain issues over the last two years cannot be the out-of-the-box issues that have driven up our appraisals. Appraisals should be realistic and in line with some expectation from our citizens as honest and understandable numbers. Today, no one has faith in the system or the appraised values. The system seems to be flawed, the process seems to be flawed. There is no way taxpayers' protests can be done in time to put together a budget plan for the city. As citizens and property owners, you should not have to fear tax appraisal season. You should not have to fear losing your home or being taxed out of your home. It appears as if the system is flawed. Again, I am encouraging you to protest your tax appraisal. It is your right to do so. It is your right to protect yourself against unreasonable valuations. As citizens, we need to know how they came up with the appraised values. We do not, as of today, understand the process that was used to create the year's appraised values. What we do know is that they are not reasonable, and citizens have totally lost faith in the process. Use the process that's out there, citizens. Protest. That's your right. Follow the process. Thank you. Further public comment? Carl?
Want to just speak briefly about vandalism. I've been in the parks and recreation business for decades, and it is the most frustrating thing that we see. You do get the reports, monthly reports, that show what kind of vandalism we do get in our park system. It's usually graffiti. I want to just encourage folks to go enjoy their parks. It's been a wonderful spring. We finally got some rain. Get out, enjoy the parks. If you see any results of vandalism, please report those to us. If you see any suspicious activity at the parks going on, contact the police, non-emergency or emergency, depending on the situation. But we encourage folks, interaction with us, to let us know about results of vandalism so we can identify it and correct it as soon as possible.
What's the area of the vandalism, generally speaking? Because when I looked at the report, the number one thing was restrooms, particularly the men's restrooms. So your latest report had a high level of vandalism and graffiti on the restrooms in our parks.
Graffiti is the biggest one, yes. And restrooms is a very common location for that.
Thank you. Further public comment? No further public comment. We will close the public comment portion of this agenda, and we will move into the consent agenda. May I ask each council member, or I will ask each council member, is there any item on the consent agenda that they would like to have pulled for today for discussion? Larry?
Oh, ma'am.
Karen?
Oh, ma'am.
Lucy?
D.
Item D. Harry?
Oh, ma'am.
Tommy? May I have a motion to approve the consent agenda with the exception of item D?
So moved.
Moved by Karen, seconded by Lucy. Any public comment concerning any of the consent agenda items? Seeing none, hearing none, we'll take a vote. All those in favor of approving the consent agenda with the exception of item D, please say aye.
Aye.
The motion passes 6 to 0. We will move on to item D, which is award of task order number 10 under IDIQ Contract ES-06-19 Engineering Services to Freeze and Nichols Incorporated in the amount of $118,471 for design services for the rehabilitation of the existing animal shelter at 3142 US 67, and authorizing the city manager to negotiate and execute all related documents. Al, you're on. Lucy, do you have a question?
Yes, Mayor. I just wanted to ask, Al, this improvement, I saw all the improvements they're already been starting to begin to make. I just wanted to know, when is this supposed to start, and how long will it take to finish?
I don't have the schedule on top of my head, but basically, once we get the design team in place, which is what this is, I think there's about 45 days to 60 days of design work, and then we'll be able to put out to bid. So Morgan, do you remember the actual date that we said for completion? I think it was the end of the year, or go ahead.
Yes, our estimated completion date would be January 2024. It would depend on, we're estimating about four to six months of actual construction time, once these engineers are done with that part of the work.
So the design work has to be done first, and you're going to take it out to bid. You'll bring the bids back to us for approval, and then contract will be written, and then we will start the work. So that's the timeframe you're looking at.
And it was going to be, what, three to six weeks, did you say?
Four to six months of construction.
Okay. Thank you so much.
Any other questions? Would you like to move for approval, Lucy?
I will. I'm going to approve as presented.
Is there a second? Second by Tommy. Any public comment on this item D? Seeing none, hearing none, I will ask for a vote. All those in favor of approving item D, please say aye.
Aye.
With none opposed, the motion carries 6 to 0. We will now move into our special agenda section of the today's meeting. And I will start by reading the special election, which is, "The city held their special election Saturday, May 6, 2023, a Texas uniform election date. Early voting was conducted weekdays between April 24 and May 2 in accordance with Texas Election Code. There were three special measures on the ballot, Proposition A, Proposition B, and Proposition C. Proposition A passed, receiving 789 votes in favor and 343 votes in opposition. Proposition B passed, receiving 820 votes in favor and 317 votes in opposition. Proposition C passed, receiving 741 votes in favor and 389 votes in opposition. The resolution in the council meeting packet includes a prepared tabulation of votes for and against each measure by precinct and totaled as required by EC 67.004. May I have a motion to adopt the resolution canvassing the returns?"
So moved.
So moved by Harry, seconded by Larry. Any public comment? With that, we'll take a vote. All in favor of adopting the resolution canvassing the returns, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None opposed, motion passes 6 to 0. I will now go into the canvassing of the general election. "The city held their general election Saturday, May 6, 2023, a Texas uniform election date. Early voting was conducted weekdays between April 24 and May 2 in accordance with Texas Election Code. There was one position on the ballot, single-member, District 3. The vote totals were as follows for the two candidates. Michael LaPac received 56 total votes, or 36.13 percent, and Harold, Harry Thomas's was... as we know him, received 99 total votes, or 63.87 percent. The city council officially finds, determines, and declares the results of the general election to elect Harold Harry Thomas to a four-year term by majority vote of the votes cast by symbol, single-member District 3. The resolution in the council meeting packet includes a prepared tabulation of votes for each candidate by precinct and totaled as required by EC 67.004. May I have a motion to adopt the resolution canvassing the returns?
Aye.
So moved by Larry, seconded by Lucy. Any public comment? Seeing none, hearing none, we'll take a vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes six to zero. I will sign the Secretary of State's canvas certification immediately following this meeting. This completes the canvas of the May 6, 2023, general election. We will now administer the Oath of Office by Single-member District 1, 3, and 5 in presentation of certificates of election by myself, Mayor Brenta Gunter, and I believe we have an official judge here in the audience to administrate these oaths. So if you all would go down and join Judge Gilbert and myself... This certificate, no, sorry. This certificate of election is to certify that Tommy Hebert was unopposed in the May 6, 2023 election, and is therefore duly elected to the office of City Council Member, Single-member District 1 of the City of San Angelo. Tommy?
Aye, Tommy Hebert.
Do solemnly swear or affirm?
Do solemnly swear or affirm?
That I will faithfully execute the duties?
That I will faithfully execute the duties?
Of the office of?
Of the office of?
San Angelo City Council, Single-member District 1.
San Angelo City Council, Single-member District 1.
Of the state of Texas?
Of the state of Texas.
And will to the best of my ability?
And will to the best of my ability.
Preserve, protect, and defend? The Constitution and the laws of the United States.
The Constitution and laws of the United States.
And of this state.
And of this state.
So help me God.
So help me God.
This certificate of election is to certify that Harry Thomas was duly elected in the May 6, 2023 election to the office of City Council Member, Single-member District 3 of the City of San Angelo. Congratulations.
Aye, Harold Thomas.
Do solemnly swear or affirm?
Do solemnly swear or affirm?
That I will faithfully execute the duties?
That I will faithfully execute the duties?
Of the office of?
Of the office of?
San Angelo City Council.
San Angelo City Council.
Single-member District 3.
Single-member District 3.
Of the state of Texas.
Of the state of Texas.
And will to the best of my ability?
And will to the best of my ability.
Preserve, protect, and defend?
Preserve, defend, and protect, and defend.
The Constitution and the laws of the United States?
Constitution and the laws of the United States.
And of this state.
And of this state.
So help me God.
So help me God.
This certificate of election is to certify that Karen Hesse-Smith was unopposed in the May 6, 2023 election, and is therefore duly elected to the office of City Council Member, Single-member District 5 of the City of San Angelo, Texas. Aye, Karen Hesse-Smith.
Do solemnly swear or affirm?
Do solemnly swear or affirm?
That I will faithfully execute the duties?
That I will faithfully execute the duties?
Of the office of?
Of the office of?
San Angelo City Council.
San Angelo City Council.
Single-member District 5.
Single-member District 5.
Of the state of Texas.
Of the state of Texas.
And will to the best of my ability?
And will to the best of my ability.
Preserve, protect, and defend?
Preserve, protect, and defend.
The Constitution and the laws of the United States.
The Constitution and the laws of the United States.
And of this state.
And of this state.
So help me God.
So help me God. Now, Harry, would you like to introduce your special guest? Or if Karen or Tommy has any special guests in the audience, you may do so as well.
Yes, I'd like to introduce First Lady of District 3, my wife, Ann Thomas. Thank you for being here.
We will now have a reception for our newly re-elected members of our councils, so this will be about a 30-minute break, so we have something, yes?
Mayor, probably like 15 minutes, if that's...
Well, we're gonna shorten that to 15 minutes. So eat fast, drink fast, and we'll get this called back to order. Thank you. ...on May 17, and we will call this meeting back to order following the reception and move into our regular agenda. Comments regarding items on the regular agenda may be made by the public when each item is discussed as outlined above. Applicants, proponents, and appellantants are exempt from the time limit above and instead must limit their remarks to less than five minutes. Item A is direction from City Council regarding a proposal from a local archaeologist group to secure and develop the historic Concho Mail Station site off Highway 87 and the South Concho River as a public interpretive area. And you're on, Bob.
Good morning, Mayor, Council. There is a piece of city land near the city line on South Bryant that has tremendous historical significance and even more tremendous potential. Mr. Tom Ashmore of the West Texas Archaeological Society, as a public citizen, has done many months of research on this site. It is city-owned land, and he has a report for you on the significance of the land, its location, and where Fort Concho comes in, is the troops from Fort Concho staffed this back in the 1870s and 1880s as a mail station. This location has great local, regional, state significance and potential, and he originally brought this report to the fort board, just sort of as a trial run. Of course, the fort board is only responsible for its own 42 and a half acres, but the fort board endorsed this in concept and encouraged Tom and his society to make a presentation to council. So even though I'm listed here, I'm gonna turn this over to Tom, and he will give you his report. Thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning.
It's a nice coincidence that this is Historic Preservation Month, because we're gonna bring you a new historic preservation site for San Angelo. I'll give you a little bit of history and some of the work that we've done to show you how we have identified the site. First, this was the headquarters of the San Antonio to El Paso stage line that was also nicknamed the Ben Ficklin Line. It was, the primary owner was Ben Ficklin, who started the town of Ben Ficklin later in his honor, and it was located three miles south of Fort Concho. Began the service in 1868. It was built in 1869, when he purchased 640 acres on the Concho River that you can see there in the map. It included a military camp. It covers an area of about three acres south of the Concho River, as he said. The stagecoaches ran three times a week from San Antonio up to this location, and then it ran twice a week from here to El Paso, and also it ran from here all the way to Fort Smith, Arkansas, using the Old Butterfield Trail route. So this is post-Civil War. A second line was the main line going up north, and Fort Concho was responsible for all of the protection from here to the west and from here to the north, and Fort McCavet was responsible for the area to the south, in conjunction with Fort Concho where military units were detached to. This is the area that we have been able to determine all of the site location, the buildings, and the road structure. Just a little background on myself, I've been doing historic site rediscovery and archaeological work throughout West Texas for about 16 years now. Before that, I was in the military, Special Intelligence for 22 years, and I taught at Goodwill for 20 more years. So I have extensive background in satellite imagery, and that is what I was able to use in my skill set to learn how to find these types of places that have been lost. What you're looking at here is the road structure coming in and going out of the site and the building locations. A little bit closer look here, and the identification of each one of the site locations. Now, there is not anything left except for one site, which is the FC Taylor Stone Building, which we have a few wall structures on the ground, and the reason for this is, in the 1882 flood, this entire complex was wiped off the face of the earth, and there is very little left. We do have some artifacts, and I'll show you those in a few minutes. One of the things you can see here that I've identified are cut banks. Cut banks are manual digs that were used to get the wagons on a lesser of a slope to go down off of the flat or back up, and we use those cut banks to validate the road structure that we can see in the imagery. This is what the top flat of the area looks like right now. You can see that it's pretty well overgrown by mesquite, would need to be cleaned out, prickly pear there, but just to give you an idea. This is from the imagery, that you can see the remnants or the impression of the main station building that validates the fact that we have the station building identified. This is one of the cut banks I was talking about. You can see how it was dug out, so they would use these cut banks to get up and down from the flat and then out to either Ben Ficklin or over to the river. This is one of the wagon trail, this would be the stagecoach road, and it's called a swale, and you can still see it today. You can see how it winds around the side of the hill here. And this is the cut bank going from that swale road down off of the hill, and it went to the river, and they made their own river crossing for the stagecoach to get to Fort Concho. This is another cut bank, this is a walking cut bank that was behind what they called the picket houses, that were the employees' location to also go down to the river. And here is the crossing of the stagecoach area coming off of the main flat there and down to the river. They laid out flat rocks to make a kind of an underwater bridge, you can see here. It's still to this day the same way that it was, and it's still only a few inches deep at this point. It's exactly 10 feet wide crossing the river here. This is the FC Taylor Stone Building. FC Taylor came in to help Ben Ficklin from back east. He was a wealthy man already when he came here, and he had a very large stone building built for himself. It was about 4,000 square feet, and we have been able to find three of the corner sections of that building, so we were able to measure out the building. All of this is documented in historical documentation from many different authors and researchers. This shows you some of the in-ground wall structure that we were using to determine the size of the building. This is another one here, and another one. And this pile of rocks here is not part of the wall structure. When the flood took out everything, it pushed all of the stones across the field, and the field was actually leased out for agriculture, and so they had to move all the rocks off the field, and this is the pile of rocks from the building that they actually piled up on the side of the field. This is the imagery that shows vegetation that we use for analysis, and it's a little hard to see here, but you can see in the field is where all the worker buildings were in the corral. There was actually two corrals. The one, the large square on the left side there, is what we call a staging corral, and it was in the middle, divided into two sections, and on one section was horses and the other section was mules. Everything going west and north of San Angelo, Fort Concho, were pulled by mules. Everything going from here to San Antonio were horses, and they had to have a separation and an area where they can harness everything up. So that was a staging corral. The large corral is out in the field here that you can see, and that is also where the wheelwright, the blacksmith, the coach sheds, everything else was there for the workers. You can see the growth in the vegetation here. The green shows the fact that it validates where the corral was, although I can see it, it's very hard to see from somebody who's not used to seeing this, but because of bioturbation from the animals, the growth always comes back more vegetation than any other area, and you can see there, it's much greener where the corral was. This is the identification of each one of the buildings. And we had a military camp there, what he talked about. It was the 24th Infantry from Fort McCavet with two companies that were detailed up to Fort Concho, and the 9th Cavalry, so we're talking about Buffalo Soldiers in both cases. They were, their mission was to protect the station and to escort the stagecoaches between Fort McCavet and Fort Concho. This is what the camp looked like. We were able to determine exactly where the tents were, because the vegetation always grows back different where tents and human activity has been, and there's actually a square rectangle where the tents were. We've also been able to find the flagpole area, and the two things in the middle would have been dining tents where everybody ate. The right side was cavalry, the left side was infantry. This shows you, just from the vegetation, how the movement from each one of those camps went, and you can see that the cavalry preparation area, they would move out or come back to that area, and then the infantry had a similar walking out to where the station was. So that is, that's still seen in this particular piece of imagery. These are some of the artifacts that have been found. This was done in 2015 by a metal detection group that we were able to contact, and they did a very good job of maintaining all of the artifacts. Most of these are military, but many of them are also related to the station. Those are going to be available for, you know, viewing for the public if we find a place to present them. So we believe this is a significant part of the history of San Angelo and West Texas. Not only the division headquarters, but this was actually, everything funneled through here. Everything going from the east to the west came through this specific station. Compound was a community. It was a large community, had 34 civilians, seven to 15 soldiers, depending on the time of the month and the years, living and working there on this area. It was, it was large enough to where they determined, they actually changed the vote of what was going to be the county seat to Ben Ficklin because they were able to use the voting of the employees at this station. We also believe this is sacred ground because many people, at least six of them, lost their lives here during the flood. The flood was so high that they actually found cows up in the tops of the trees when the flood was over. So all the buildings were wiped away. These people were up on top of the roofs, and it actually just finally pushed the buildings out, and they lost their lives. We think this is significant, both the local area and actually all of West Texas. The site should be designated as a historically significant site. I've done a lot of work out there, and I've come up with what I think might be a walking trail plan and a historic, different locations that could be stopping points to explain these different locations, and it could be a walking trail, nature trail, and a historic preservation site. And this, I've taken several groups on here. We also have artifacts that we have put to the side of the field here that are not ones that were taken by the metal detecting group. So we have the blacksmithing artifacts, and we have a lot of metal artifacts and glass and bottle that can be shown to people while they're out there. That is my presentation.
Do I have questions for Bob or Mr. Ashmore?
Number one, I would say this is incredibly interesting history, and I'm glad we found it, and I'm glad you've been working on it for as long as you have. My first reaction is we need to make sure we get a historic marker up and make sure we identify it. I'm not sure where we would find the funds to do the walking trails, as had been pointed out here. We struggle to finance the work that we need to do at the fort to start with, so adding to that seems to be a tall climb. But that does not mean we shouldn't designate it as a historic location, that we shouldn't have it as something that we work towards and hopefully can find a path forward to make it more than just identifying that area. It is the history. It is an important part of our history, and we don't want to lose it or ignore it. And those are my thoughts. So, does anybody else have a thought or comment to add?
Yes, ma'am.
Go ahead, Tommy.
I think it's important that we do our best to identify funding source, and Bob may have some ideas, or maybe Carl, somebody may have some ideas of a funding source to get the project started and then keep it, keep it moving.
We actually are here for two reasons. First, we've done, which is to tell you all about this, and we're glad that you're enthused. Second is to give us, for you to give us the permission to forge ahead and try to answer all of these questions and bring to you maybe in three to six months a plan. There is a lot here. There are many options, and I think we need professional help. And I think we can identify the funding and the people to do a feasibility study and bring back to you some of the options that would be there. I also think that funding can be found to fund the feasibility study, and all of this in turn will tell us what's achievable and what's the best bang for the buck. The marker is one of the many ways to designate this, and that would certainly be part of the mix. So we're just seeking a green light to move ahead with your direction.
Thank you. Move forward, as I think you've laid out.
That's generic and helpful, and we'll take it.
Yeah. I mean, right now, I mean, I think the key thing is, is that you're going to have to put together a plan and come back and suggest to, first of all, feasibility study, steps one, two to 20, whatever the number of steps, and it won't happen overnight.
Oh, this is a multi-year production.
It's lots of years. It's, but the good news is, we've identified it, we know it's there, and a lot of work has been done to really tell a great story that I think other people would be very interested in hearing and seeing, so I'm really excited about coming forward.
Yeah, you own it.
I mean, the better news is that this is...
We don't have to buy it. We own it.
You don't have to buy it, and we don't have to worry about someone else's land. I would also like to take the opportunity, Carl and I both, to commend Tom and C.A. Majin, who's not here today. They have done absolutely tremendous, outstanding work in already cleaning up the site and in doing years of research here. This is just an amazing opportunity for the city that hits all the high points of tourism, heritage, public service, parks and recreation, and everything in between. So, Tom, take a bow.
And we, as an organization, are ready to help to move forward with the historical side of this in planning, everything like that, so we're standing by to help in any way that is determined by the, by the planning and the feasibility of it all. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Any other comments from council? Okay. Thank you.
We propose to come back to you in three to six months with some resources, opportunities, and options.
Make sure those resources are dollar signs with somebody who's willing to write a check to help us move this forward.
I get the drift.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is consider awarding RFP P1-01-23 to NCO Systems Incorporated in the amount of $357,328 for the installation of audiovisual equipment in the city council chambers and authorizing the city manager to negotiate and execute all related documents. So Brian, that's a large number, and we need to make sure the public totally understands that this money does not come out of the general fund or any of the other resources relative to the general fund, that there's a separate funding source for it, and describe what would possibly cost $357,000.
Okay. So first off, I'm Brian Groves. I'm our communications director for the city. So you talked about the funding source. That is our PEG funds, and we get a certain amount of money every year from Suddenlink or Optimum that is, can solely be used for capital costs that relate to content on the channel. So when this room was originally done in 2015, it was used for our studio, the East Mezzanine, all of those things with the ultimate goal of putting content on our TV channel. And so you ask what all in here could cost $300,000? There's a lot that goes into this to makes all, makes all this work, and so it's, the last time it was installed was 2015. We've started having different components fail. We've had mic channels go out. We're having some issues with our system. We've had some, we had a crash a few months ago during the meeting. You all didn't know about it because we were able to get it back up. But there are things that are starting to fail because they're at the end of their life, and so we need to update that. Other things that are in there are some ADA improvements. So right now, you know, if you watch some broadcasts, they'll have a picture-in-picture that shows an ASL interpreter. We do have a picture-in-picture option. It was not built for ASL back when we did the project originally, and so whenever we try to use that, it's too much for our system, and our system crashes. So one of those components that we'll be doing will, the video system will be able to support that. The other thing that we're looking at doing is bringing live captioning into the room, so we'll have some TV screens that'll be installed in here that will have live closed captions in here, and we'll also be able to do a split screen on there to show an ASL interpreter if we have one here. And so other things, you know, the audio, video, there's a lot of components in here that we'll be able to keep, like the TV screens and things like that, but there's a lot of guts and bones in our room that are showing signs of end of life. We actually fell out of our warranty in December, so if anything does crash, we would have, we'd have no warranty or support for that, so we would have to go out and buy new equipment. So I can, I can talk more about that, what the project is, but that's kind of the crux of what it is, the funding and why we're doing it.
Again, repeat where the money's coming from, so people better understand the funding source for this?
Yes, ma'am. So it is our PEG fee, which is Public Education and Government TV Channel. So our TV channel is a PEG channel, and state law requires the cable companies to give a piece of their revenue to the PEG channels for use solely for content on the TV channel. So it can't pay my salary, can't pay Laura Ly's salary, can't pay for anybody, but it can pay for equipment, it can pay for cameras, it can pay for things like that that ultimately puts our content on our channel, which obviously has been super helpful in general, but let's just take the COVID-19 pandemic. Had we not had all of the equipment that we have, the studio, all of these things in all these different locations, we wouldn't have been able to reach the citizenry as well as we, we did. And so this is our only funding source for video and things like that, and so it cannot be used for anything else. It will not impact the general fund at all.
Any questions for Brian?
I may have to approve.
There's a motion for approval. May I have his second? Karen seconded it. Any public comment concerning this item? Seeing none, hearing none, we'll take a vote. Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? With none opposed, the motion passes 6-0. Move to item C. Consider awarding RFB PK-01-23 to Shirts Landscape Company in the amount of $126,301.94 plus 10% contingencies, utilizing $100,000 of civic events funds, fund balance for the landscape and irrigation project at the McNeese Convention Center and authorizing the city manager to negotiate and execute all related documents. Sidney, you're on.
Good morning, council. Good morning, mayor. Good morning, city manager. Sidney Walker, Civic Events Manager, here to discuss the landscape and irrigation needs at the McNeese Convention Center. We're looking to improve our landscaping and irrigation needs here at the convention center. Obviously, we sent out RFB requests for bids in late March. We received those back in early April. We did receive two bids. We're looking to, the lowest bid was Shirts Landscape Company with the amount of $126,301.94. We're looking for a 10% contingency as well with the estimated total of $138,932.13. We would also need a budget amendment for $100,000. Our fund balance as of now is $796,518, and we do have approximately $39,000 in budget currently that can cover the rest of the amount that we need. So I am seeking city council's approval for the Shirts Landscape Company bid, as well as seeking the authorization to budget $100,000 from our civic events fund balance.
Why are we asking for the civic events budget to pay for it versus hot tax money? Because I think hot tax money can pay for work done here at the convention center.
It certainly can. There are some dollars, when he's talking about the budget, and correct me if I'm wrong, Sid, there are some funds that are already in that that have been carried in from the hot dollars on the projects we did here, right?
Yes, sir.
And so this is taking advantage of those dollars that remain and...
Using $100,000 from our fund balance, from our personal fund, fund balance.
You could, instead of the 100, you could transfer additional hot dollars, leaving those dollars in for him to do other maintenance things that need to be done. So yes, that could happen as well.
I just think that's an important strategic move to do because there's always issues with this convention center, knowing that it is, you know, somewhat dated.
Yes, ma'am.
That you might find a great need for those civic events dollars to pay for the future needs, and so I'm just throwing it out there as the other potential funding source.
Tina may be able to advise on what that fund has currently and if that could be moved over easily.
Tina Dersky, Director of Finance, I do think the hot fund could absorb the $100,000 from their fund balance. I don't think there's any issues with, with doing that in that way, so.
That's what I would like to, a motion to include, is using funding from hot tax money versus a civic events, because there's so many projects here. And I know that there was a time, and I'd like Teresa to go back and look at this, but we have new owners of the hotel next to the convention center, and at one point, the city council had approved that that tunnel or that walkway from that hotel be done to attach to this convention center so that it was, people who were having conventions here would be a covered area to move from one location to the next, which I think is important to better utilize this facility as connecting that. And the owners would like us to relook at how that, what that language was. I'm sure it was some, you know, 15 years ago, 10 years ago, so I know it needs to be updated, but we need to bring that back forward again, and so I would really encourage that we seek funding from hot tax, not the funding from civic events fund balance, and that would be my motion.
Mayor, on that comment, we can pull that. We, that did happen several years ago.
You remember it, yeah.
Long time ago. I'm that old. But what we, but what we also will do is, when we pull that, I think that, that concept was to make that walkway better. You can't really totally enclose it because it goes under the railroad, and you have all those issues. But it was, it did have other strings attached of what the hotel was needing to do for us to make some sort of investment like that, bringing that hotel up to a quality hotel that would support conventions and so forth that would draw those here to the convention. So we'll pull that, we'll find it.
Yeah, if you would. He's already spent $4 million since he's taken the hotel back over again, and that's one of the key things that he's looking at. I don't remember the language, I don't remember the details on it, but let's, let's pull it forward and see where it stands. So I made a motion to approve the request for the landscape, but to have hot tax money supported versus civic events.
I got it.
Seconded by Larry. Any other, any public comment on this item? Seeing none, let's take a vote. All those in favor of approving the dollar amount and the hot tax money's being used, say aye.
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 Motion passes 6-0. Item D, consider resolution amending the schedule of fees and charges to amend charges for building and construction-related fees, business-related fees, fees for abatement of junk and impoundment and sale of property, parks and recreation fees, planning-related fees, fire and rescue service fees, cemetery fees, and facility use fees. This sounds like a very, very long conversation. Sit down, buckle up, here we go.
Need a snack?
You're on.
Okay, mayor, we're going to go over the history, oh, Tina Dersky, Director of Finance, pardon me. We're going to go over the history of the fee review process, and then we'll move into the removal of some existing fees that are no longer used, and then we'll move on to current fees that have a proposed increase or decrease, or any new fees that are, we're looking at adding to the fee schedule. So in August of 2019, city council directed staff to review fees annually to accomplish a 100% cost of service recovery goal by fiscal year 2025.
May I just comment on that? I'd like you to voice what happened since 2019 to 2023. I think it's called COVID.
Yes, ma'am.
Many things happened where nothing was going on, and I think our vote on this, to have 100% cost recover by 2025, is unrealistic.
We agree.
And we're going to have to change that conversation to future years because we cannot, with all that's going on in the economy and the new appraisals, cannot possibly add insult to injury on some of these fees requests. So I'm just going to make that statement to start with. 2025 is not an acceptable date for 100% cost recovery.
We clearly understand.
I agree, ma'am, yes. I agree with that. So what happened was, like you said, when the COVID pandemic hit, that was obviously the second year of, well, the first year that we were supposed to be moving to that cost recovery goal. Council, of course, decided not to review fees that year, and each year since, we've come to council and asked, you know, whether you wanted to review fees, and so far, we have not. This, now four years later, is the first time we'll be reviewing fees since council set that goal. Of course, that impacted our, like I said, like you said, our goal of getting there by 2025, but we have reviewed the fees for fiscal year 2024 budget process, and we plan to continually incremental get to that 100% of cost recovery service through council direction. And that's one of the things that we had planned to get direction from you today was, you know, how, what's our timeline now, given that we've taken four years off, and how do we want to move forward? So. With that, I'll start in with the removal of fees, and I'll ask directors if you have questions as well, can come up and kind of help support what these fees are and why we're removing or increasing or decreasing and all of that. So, so we have a removal of fees for building and construction-related fees. These discounts expired May 4th of 2021, and so they're just being removed from the fee schedule because they're no longer used. What is being used? Why was it there to begin with? And, I mean, what?
Let me ask John or Charlie to come up and...
I'm fine with getting rid of it. I just think if it was out there...
Yeah, this, this was a, a discount for folks who submitted their, this was shortly after we implemented a new planner review software. And to encourage people to use that software rather than bring in paper applications, we offered a discount for those. At the time, you all chose to do that as kind of a trial, and it expired, I think, after a year. And so, again, it's already expired and no longer in use since 2021. But what you'll see in our proposed fees this year is something similar, but it's a, it's a surcharge on folks who don't submit through our digital system. Staff spends a lot of time processing paper applications. We have to scan them in, upload them, and do a number of things, processing them, that if, if customers upload them directly to our system, it saves all of that time. So what we've...
Think some people would question that it has and does that. So it will be a big conversation that we have moving forward because I think the idea seems great when you say it out loud. In practice, I don't think that's happening, and I think a lot of people would say it isn't working.
And we can talk about that when we get to that fee, but that, that tells you why this fee has gone away. It was just a temporary, kind of a trial run on a discount.
Removal of fees of abatement of junk fees for impoundment and sale of project, of property. And then there's a list of those fees that are being removed.
Now, tell me about that, for taking and impounding of any personal property, because I'm going to tell you a story that is really offensive. Okay, so our rail park that we are incredibly excited about have been, has been broken into twice now. The last time was about a month ago where it was cut, the locks were pounded off of the facility, the double fence, and they stole everything inside the container and outside property as well. Police called and said they had found one piece of this property that had been stolen, but the person who owned that had to go pay two hundred and thirty-eight dollars to Home Motors to recover their property that was stolen that the police found. Now, why would we charge somebody two hundred and some dollars to get their property back that was stolen?
Home Motors makes that charge.
There's something wrong with that concept. If it's a policy that we have, we need to be rethinking that policy because to no fault of the owner, they had done everything they could to protect that piece of property and then had to go pay to get it back within 24 hours.
Mayor, the issue, though, with homeowners picking up that piece, piece of equipment, Mike's right, they do charge for that. They're providing a service themselves. There's going to be, somebody has to pay for that. So who pays for it? Either the, the customer that had this, this, the stuff stolen, or the city does. I mean, who actually, who actually covers the cost?
If the police found it, if the police found it, why wouldn't the person go to the police department to recover it?
So you're saying directly from the police to that person, call them to come pick it up? I mean, I'm just trying, we can talk about it and get that resolved.
Okay, but it's a piece of property that you can pick up and carry. It's not a piece of property that had to be used by a trailer. It's, I mean, I don't get it.
I'd like to get some more details on that, and we'll work on that.
I'd be glad to get it.
Thank you.
So this first set of the impoundment and sale of property, these fees are no longer being used. And then for the garbage, weeds, junk and unsanitary condition abatement fees, we are no longer using the six yard dump truck. So this fee is no longer relevant. For parks and recreation, these are some programs that have been disbanded, and so we no longer have a need to have these fees on our, in our fee schedule. For baseball, kickball, softball and volleyball.
Why are those programs being disbanded? I thought we still had baseball youth leagues, et cetera. I'm not sure we understood that we no longer had youth leagues.
Good morning. My name is John Andrew Perez, assistant recreation manager, filling in for Brent Casey's night in. So the reason we're getting rid of these programs, these programs were started for team, select teams, teams that came in. So Little League is still going on, they still offer these programs. So we're, we tried this about five years ago. It happened for a year, and ever since then, we haven't had these programs take part. Kickball, again, that was a new program we started. It took off for about a year or so, and recently, just with everything going on, you know, these programs are offered, offered, offered. They haven't made in the last three to four years.
Is that because of COVID or just nobody interested?
A little bit, probably COVID, and also a little bit of, you know, just a lot of things going on, you know? Kids playing other sports, traveling, different things going on. I mean, we can only pull so many from the community to, to play in our programs with everything going on, you know? You've got volleyball, basketball, baseball.
Trends swing as well as to what they, what's a popular item at the time.
Correct.
So kickball may have been popular, like pickleball or whatever, and then it swings to something else.
We have a pickleball team now?
Yeah.
There's a big pickleball group.
Because it's popular.
Yes, it is, very big. One of the growing sports in, in America. And also, going back, like I said, Little League is still going, offering baseball. So the kids are still playing baseball. And the softball, SACFA, the local organization still offers the girls' fastball organization. And the volleyball tournament, that's just a fee for a tournament. Now, we do have fees for a team, for entry fees for the stuff like that. So we're just trying to clean up some of the language.
Okay, moving on to nature center, removing fees for services no longer offered for sleepover, summer camp, adoption, basic memorial and plus. And then at the Texas Bank Sports Complex, removing the fee for Southern Little League rental and Southern Little League T-ball rental because the band's been, the league has been disbanded. And then for the rec center room rental, South Side with dance slash DJ, that's being removed as well.
So these are all being removed because there's no audience for these things?
There's either no audience, I would, I don't know if John Henry's speaking to this one as well, but I'm guessing there's either no audience or lack of resources.
Correct. Again, we're not able to offer some of the, at the nature center, we're not able to offer the camp anymore, you know, of last month or so. We have to do a new ordinance every year for that, so we don't do the, the camp at the nature center. Also, at the Texas Bank Sports Complex, Southern Little League actually disposed, they're no longer in service. So all those kids got directed through the school and went off to Western Lakeview or Northern. And then we don't, really, we, we're not big enough to offer a, you know, a DJ and a big dance at our rec centers right now.
Some of those programs, like the camps, they still do the summer camps, they just do those at, at the rec centers in various places, so they've taken, you know, taken on different type of activities that actually are bigger, the number of kids in those camps, and they take them to the pool and all this kind of stuff. So just different programs.
Yeah, I just want to make sure, because we always hear, I think every council member that is up here has heard from the public, there's nothing to do in San Angelo, there's nothing to do in San Angelo. And then we look at these things that are going away, and I just want to make sure that if they're going away, there's no audience for them, and that's the reason we're doing it, because people keep saying we need things to do.
And good comment. Just keep in mind, tell people that, just because those are going, they're, they're constantly adding new programs and activities on their end to keep up with the trends and what people are looking for.
Okay. Planning related fees that are being removed for conveyance of property interest in the right of way abandoned by the city. And then for general provisions, again, that discount expired May fourth of 2021, similar to the other one that we discussed earlier. And now we'll move into the fee increases for permits and inspections. Oh, okay, thank you. So permits and inspections for residential construction, the base fee, the current fee is fifty dollars, proposing it at one forty. Residential structure, living areas, thirteen cents, moving it to twenty cents, garage carpets, porches.
What is that residential structure, living area, thirteen cents?
I believe that's per square foot, but I'll ask John or Charlie to come up and speak to what exactly that covers.
I mean, if there's a base fee, why isn't the residential structure, the garage carpets, porches, patios and accessory buildings?
Building official, yes, we charge a base fee and then per square footage, your heated square footage, like your living area, it's charged out. So the bigger, the project, the more time it takes to do those, there's a cost there.
So someone do the numbers for me. If it's a three thousand square foot home, on top of the base fee, what are we paying? If someone has that information, come forward.
She has an average of not exactly three thousand, but we think you...
Got someone from the audience who might have some information.
Okay.
Yeah, and that three thousand, kind of keep in mind, how much is it going to be living space? How much of it is garage? How much of it's covered patio, porches, things like that?
Do you have another copy for the record? So for mayor, close to three thousand, we do have calculated at twenty-six hundred seventy-four square feet, the fee would be six hundred and twenty-six dollars on top of the base, base fee.
Compared to previous?
Compared, oh, that's with the base fee, I'm sorry. Kimberly said that's with the base fee. So compared with three hundred and sixty-eight before.
So three hundred and sixty-eight.
Twenty-six and three sixty-eight.
So six hundred and some. What percent increase is that?
That's a seventy percent fee increase, and it's moving to... Seventy, seventy percent fee increase.
It would seem aggressive.
Ma'am?
Yes, sir.
I'd just kind of like to understand the rationale between the fifty dollar current fee and the proposed fee. Why such a significant jump?
Well, and as well as those other statistics, current fee plus proposed, so your total is overall seventy percent increase. So that's significant.
The question should be, where should the amount be in the future? And a seventy percent increase may look like a lot right now, but in the future, that amount should be higher than that. We, we started looking at percentages from that perspective. It's maybe seem like seventy percent, but we may be way off the number where we need to be in the future. So that needs to be considered as well. And that's a good question, I think, if anything. We do have staff to answer that question. This, the, there's a, there's a fee, a cost for providing a service, and right now, we're not meeting that cost. So we're having a supplement from the general fund to cover these costs. So we want to get to the cost as soon as possible, mayor, but we want to phase it in. I do agree that it has to be probably over a few years, and we'll discuss how council wants to handle that. But I think we have to look at the overall cost of providing that service.
Question mark is relative to cost of that service versus what ends up making a home unaffordable, because the number one source of revenue for the city happens to be property tax dollars. So when we start putting additional costs on top of the cost of building, we start to price out homes. And if we're not selling homes, our property tax dollars become a challenge, and we know we need the property tax dollars as a city. So what we have to do is to balance the increases relative to how we reduce our overhead and reduce our cost of operation to incorporate some of that into this fee schedule.
Well, our concern, of course, is just to make sure that we have that cost provided by the, the user, right? We don't want to keep, continue supplementing from the general fund. I do understand if we're being, we're being called to be as efficient as possible, and we do call staff to do that. But again, on our end, the general fund can continue subsidizing the fees. I mean, these fees are, should meet the actual cost of service at some point in the future, and it hasn't for such a long time, for years, for years now.
Okay, so we had a seventy percent increase in the overall cost of operation of the planning department?
No, we were already far behind, mayor. So this, this is an adjustment to get us closer to where we should be, actually. So I mean, we're, we're still not charging at the amount that we should be charging, actually, so.
Lucy, Daniel, you said that it was coming out of the general fund. How much money has come out of the general fund every year since 2020 and on?
We'd have to take a look at that number, but we can provide that because any time that we fall short on a, on a fee, it has to be covered somehow, you know? So it's just a discounting to the, to the user. The city council would have to take a look at it, and I'm not even sure if it's legal for the city to be discounting based on the fact that we do get a benefit, right? Absolutely, I agree with the mayor, that the more houses go up, the more, more work that's done, there's a benefit to our economy. But we do have to make sure that we consider, do we, can we discount fees and not charge at the, at the, at the amount that it should be at? I'm not sure. I mean, that's something that city council would have to take a look at and say, hey, do we really want to discount, or do we want to charge at the cost of providing that fee?
I think there's a, a conversation to be had, what percent growth do we have in increasing these fees? And if it's not legal, why have we been doing it? I'm assuming what we've been doing is legal, so I can't imagine this is a legal versus non-legal conversation. It's about whether we think these fees are reasonable or not reasonable based off of the percent increase in the fees. That's the challenge. And the question mark is, from zero to seventy percent, or from whatever to seventy percent, would seem to be quite aggressive. We're not saying that we don't need to increase the fees. It's relative to how fast and the timeframe it takes to do it.
We agree.
But the problem is, is that every year, at the rate we're doing it, our, our overhead, the cost of running the planning department, the permits and inspections continues to grow. So how do we stop the growth in overhead to help offset the expense of doing these fees?
We understand that, mayor. Efficiency is key for anything that we do at this point. But again, even with efficiencies, we do want to make sure that we are charging a fee for the services being provided. And I get where you're coming from, I really do, but I want to make sure that on our end, we get to the point where we're not having to subsidize that of the general fund.
I just think a seventy percent increase is aggressive. I make that comment.
I do have an answer for you, Lucy. The general fund is currently subsidizing one point five million dollars of a two point five million dollar budget annually.
Well, and I'd like to address the legal question that was raised by Daniel. Just, I haven't done legal research on it for this particular meeting, but generally, when you're looking at fees and charges, if you do them too high, then it's considered an illegal tax. There is the risk that we are giving essentially a gift to whomever, whatever private citizen is receiving that, if we're not, we're, we're setting these fees so low that it no longer meets the public purpose, meaning that we're no longer able to function effectively for the benefit of some private citizens. So it is a legal determination on whether or not there's a public purpose. It would be a judicial determination. They do give a lot of deference, the courts do, to the findings of council. But I think that the more out of whack things get, the more likely it is there could be a problem in that regard.
Yes, so the question mark is, at what level, at what level do we increase annually? And again, I go back and say, we understand within all the things that are going on. In fact, costs have gone up. The question mark is, is seventy percent the correct percentage? And that's the challenge here. It's not about whether the fees have to exist. Obviously, they do. The question mark is, at what rate do we increase them? And I repeat, a seventy percent increase is very aggressive.
Mayor, may I propose something? So I think in order for us to phase in, use a phasing approach, we need to know what the actual total fee really would be, and then kind of know that we're going to phase it in over a three, four or five year period to get to that point. So what would be the amount that we'd go up this year? Instead of talking about seventy percent or whatever numbers we're talking about right now, we need to know the end game. What exactly, what is the number we need to get to, and then phase it in over a certain number of years?
And I don't disagree with that. The question mark is how you, how you get to that end game, because as we know, every year, there's a percent increase. And the question mark is, as we increase it, at what level do we do? Because the needle keeps moving to the right. It's not like you're setting a basis number of operating expense and overhead today that won't increase. So is the fee going to increase at the same rate that the overhead increases? And what becomes the reasonable balance between today's fee, next year's fee, and what we would hope is the cost of building due to commodity? and what we would hope is the cost of building due to commodities would stabilize enough that these fees don't add in salt to the already increased cost of building a home?
The way you do that, Mayor, is by reviewing cost of service, full cost of service on an annual basis, and adjusting the phased approach to make sure that we meet the total cost of service. I mean, it'd be have to something that be reviewed on an annual basis.
Mayor?
Yes.
Tina, have you, has finance received guidance or direction from council that essentially guided your actions in fee review? Did we pass something previously that said, this is what we're going to do on fee review, and finance shall act accordingly?
Yes, we passed an ordinance that said that. That's what the first slide showed and reflected. The question mark is, when we passed that, when we created that strategy, that idea of getting to 100%, many things happened in our economy. And so where that seemed realistic in 2019, multiple things have happened, from high inflation to commodity costs to supply and demand. And so our direction in 2019 needs to be reviewed because of all the things that have happened. Interest rates have now gone up. There are so many issues that have contributed to the cost of building a home today. And we know that just the fact of interest rates is its own hiccup to selling houses today. I just want to be realistic, and I am saying again, a 70% increase would seem to be too aggressive.
Tina? For my benefit, repeat the number, two numbers you gave, the total cost and what we are subsidizing. Repeat those.
Those numbers?
The 1.5 million, the 2.5, whatever they were, repeat those for me, please.
The Planning and Development Services budget is about $2.5 million this year for expenditures, and their revenue budget is about a million, so we're subsidizing 1.5 million.
Maybe we need to see, to Daniel's point and also the mayor's point, the relationship, that may not be the right way to say it. Where, again, this may be repetition of what's already been said. I would like to see what, if we were charging what we should be today, what would that number be? And then I would also like to see what the shortfall is today based on what we are charging. That's not the 2 million and the 1.5, is it? You said the planning department was 2.5 and the other was 1. That's not the shortfall of the fees, though, is it? That's a granite.
Right, because we get a report from you all that shows the fees we've collected.
And having reviewed that document, which I don't have with me today, it doesn't appear, based off of the fees we've collected, that we have that shortfall. That's why I'm confused.
Maybe you can come back and give us, okay, if we were charging what would cover cost, not, no profit in there, but cover cost, what would that number be? And then, in fact, give us a...
In the big picture, it would be $2.5 million total fees for planning and to cover its cost of service.
So that is the number. We're only...
That includes planning, permits, the whole John's whole department.
Yeah, and I think we would have to go back and look at that because we do do some things that aren't directly attributable to a customer coming in, applying for something. So as just one example, our GIS staff does all the computer mapping for the whole city. That's not something that a customer would pay for. So the general fund, in other words, we do do some activities that the general fund would cover.
They need to be split out, so we get a realistic number. We're not talking apples to apples, and that's one of the problems here. Because we get those reports from you all that show the fees we receive. This conversation, 2.5 and 1.5, is not relative to the fees that you send us that you've collected.
We agree, Mayor. It needs to be based on the fees, actually.
Our revenue budget for fees is $1 million for the planning department, so.
Maybe you could lay that out. And then also, I would just, as, maybe to move us along here, I would suggest, let's look at a four-year. We've been, I'll say, dormant for four years. Let's look at a four, and if you need to stretch it to five, but to get to where we should be. And then the council will need to hold ourselves accountable and responsible for reviewing that and keeping those up to date. Hopefully, we have no other pandemics or other things that would occur that would cause them to be put on hold. But that may help us then to get to where we can see the bigger picture.
Is that something you'd be interested in, Mayor?
I think we have to realistically relook at this and understand what we're really asking to have happen. And I repeat, a 70% increase in one year is not realistic. We've got to look at a strategic plan to move it forward. And that ordinance that we passed in 2019, we need to bring it back, and we need to unapprove that, or reapprove, taking it away, so that this approach is reasonable.
And I will say, this is the first fee that we're looking at, and most fees are not increasing that substantially. On average, total fees that we're looking at this year, which is 1/3 of planning and development's fees, or permits fees, on average, they're getting to 73% of the cost of service.
And it's very hard for us to say, okay, in four years, be at that number. Because as we found out when we passed that ordinance in 2019, I won't say the word, shit happens, okay? So we got to make sure we don't get so firm in our perspective that we forget that life happens. And we have to be flexible enough to ensure our community, construction community, is not hampered by our direction.
And we do propose, and Mayor, we take a look at, let's take this back, okay? We'll look at the total cost, and we can look at it on an annual basis by some price index or whatever to make sure that we're at the full cost, right? But we can come back and then phase it and break it down over a four-year period and propose it that way, if you're good with that. Rather than having a big, old, long discussion about that today. Since the direction is, let's phase it maybe over a four-year period, then let's find out what that is. We'll tie a price index to that and make sure that on an annual basis, we get to that point within the four-year period.
We need our property base to grow, and we've got to be supportive in our community to make sure these things continue to happen and people can afford to buy a home. I think that approach is a good approach. This we cannot live with.
Okay, then we'll come back and give that information on what that number would be. And then the first year, as far as the first phase, what that adjustment would be, Mayor.
Good. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Do we want to go through the rest, or just?
Well, I think that an overview would be really good. It does not mean we have to debate it to the level that we debated this, perhaps. But let's at least do an overview. We will not make a decision today, and we will not vote on most of these fees, I'm assuming.
Get familiar with the fees that we are looking at.
But let's go through them.
Okay, that works. So again, under permits, other construction permits fees would be a base fee of $125 with an additional $1,000 or a fraction of $7. And I would have to get John to come explain what that means to you, or Charlie.
So meaning if you have more square footage versus less square footage? And what's the base square footage you're talking about?
This is actually for commercial use, so we base all the permit fee on the valuation of...
Would you talk in the microphone, please?
Yes, ma'am. That's the commercial fees, so it's based on the cost or the value of the construction. So it's, the base fee as of today is $100, and then it's $5 for every $1,000 or fraction thereof, again, off of the value.
The next one is for change of occupancy for no alterations, minor alterations, or multiple inspections.
This one, I would say, has a lot of conversation that should happen. So if I, if somebody buys my house, they're going to have to have a new permit of occupancy that's going to cost them $200.
No, ma'am. If it's going to stay a house, it's only if they're going to change the use. So say they're going to buy your house and convert it into a store, a retail store, then it would require a change of occupancy. But residential to residential or mercantile to mercantile does not require a change of occupancy.
And minor alterations would be like, versus multiples? Because that multiple inspections is what, electrical, plumbing?
Yes, ma'am. Minors only if they're going to be removing some walls, and it doesn't require any electrical, mechanical, or plumbing work to be done. The major or multiple inspections, then it requires additional inspectors and additional permits, yes.
We'll continue to review those.
The next one is for foundation only for residential or accessory structures.
Pretty aggressive, I think. Keep going.
Next is demolition fees for a commercial, residential, or accessory structure.
If a building is considered not livable and is in such damage that it has to be torn down, is that part of one of these fees?
If the city has to come in and it has to go to the construction board, that's a little bit different. But yes, ma'am, if it's where the owner is moving forward and taking responsibility of that and wanting to demo their residence, yes.
Tina?
Go ahead.
Did you say, I just wanted to clarify for me. The proposed fee that we see on all of these still does not cover the entire cost of service, is that correct?
On most of them, yes. There's, I think, one or two that was 100%. But on average, we're getting to 73% of the cost of service with all of these fees.
Okay, thank you.
So next is the approach curb cut for residential, commercial, and in-state right-of-way.
In-state right-of-way from 5 to 30, what is, what are we talking about?
If your approach is off of a state right-of-way, it has to go to TechStop, and so we have to send it over to them for their review. And there's additional communication between TechStop and our division or our department. We issue the permit and then go from there, issuing the permit. But there's extra steps that are involved in regards to that.
Swimming pool inspections for commercial, residential above ground, and residential in-ground.
Again, all that will be reviewed, right?
Well, Mayor.
Yes, ma'am.
This is for overview.
Yes. Temporary occupancy permits for residential and commercial.
So what happens on these? Because the planning department, the planning commission has seen tremendous amount of STRs over the past six months. Is this part of that?
That would go back to the residential change of occupancy. So not the temporary. Temporary occupancy is typically, they want to start maybe doing a soft opening where they're not ready to do a complete opening, but they're almost there. There may be like one or two things that they want to do. You typically see this in commercial. Residential's very rare.
So for electrical, there's a base fee proposed at $70, and insulation requiring more than two inspections would be $60.
So that must be one that we're 100% covering the cost. It's okay, just keep going. I'm just making a comment since it's only a $10 increase.
Okay. Next is plumbing and fuel or gas, a base fee of $75. Small fixture, $10, and a large fixture, $15.
Okay, go back. So a small fixture is like a small chandelier?
No, I'm sorry. This is plumbing, so it's like your water closets, your lavatories. Those are going to be your small fixtures. Your large fixtures are your water lines, your gas lines, your sewer lines, your grease traps. Those would be considered large fixtures.
Mechanical base fee at $75, mechanical, commercial, vent hood, $60. Mechanical voucher, $35, tents or temporary tents, $85.
Are those for like events?
Yes, ma'am.
Billboards, $2.85, wall, $1.05. Free standing, 2 to 50 square feet, $115. Free standing, 51 and up, $120, and then a portable at $75. General fees, an hourly rate in excess of two hours would be $60, and an inspection convenience fee would be $60. Non-digital submissions, this, I think, is going back to what John was talking about earlier, where there's incentive to do your submissions online. Is that what this one is?
So if you don't do it online, what's the fee? It's $100, and if you do do it online, it's zero?
Right, and that's to encourage people to do it online and therefore have less paperwork involved and less hands-on for the department.
And that's the other reason these fees are becoming an issue for me. And that is, is that we keep asking people to do more and more online, and yet we're saying our costs are increasing exponentially, so what are we talking about?
All I would say to that is, the cost, we're already there. So we're trying to minimize future costs by putting things online, those kind of things, which reduce the amount of additional labor we might need. So this is an effort to keep it combed down. The cost was already there on the front end.
Business-related fees under code compliance. Limousine permit renewal would be $20. Abatement for a 12-yard dump truck would be $650, and mowing services would be $175.
That's pretty aggressive.
Parks and Recreation, moving on to that. For recreation at Lake Nazworthy, looking at an entrance fee daily of $5, an entrance fee for annual of $30, annual plus, or for 65-plus of $20, and annual for disabled of $20. Campsite daily fees at $10, and then the pier rental for two hours would be $150.
This is a sideline, but when is that new fishing pier going to be done?
Mayor, the pier itself is completed. We're waiting to complete the parking lot aspect of it. Of course, the ADA component that goes into it. But that's left, and I think, Shane, right now, we're probably about a month and a half away to getting that done. Yes, we're pretty close.
Well, it's summertime.
It is, though.
Make it available this summer.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, and so again, for parks, the pavilion rentals would be $20. Park venues for two hours, that's $60. And then visitor center grounds for $60 for one hour.
How do you monitor that?
Daniel goes out there and watches.
I know. I mean, people just go out there and do it without no permits. I'm not even sure who even comes in to ask for a permit.
He wears his swimsuit.
On the grounds, if they're using the grounds, usually for like a wedding, that's the most common thing, is they get a slip that says they've rented it, so they have exclusive rights. So if anybody else shows up, they can say, hey, I've got it reserved.
How many fights have we had?
None that I recall of, but we have for practices, for sports practices. But that's how we control that.
But it's really, can I say yes, please? But it's really not controlled, because if I want to go have a picnic and nobody was having a wedding or nobody was doing anything, I could still use it for free.
Correct.
I think the purpose of the fee is so that you have exclusive rights to it.
Right. You only pay if you want to have that exclusive right.
Otherwise, it's open to the public.
We have a lot of other areas, great scenic areas, other than the visitor center. And I see people out there having pictures taken all over the city, so.
We have a new historic archaeological site from today, so we can send them out there.
All right, so recreation for baseball fields that are lighted would be $5 an hour. Those that are unimproved would be $3 an hour. And for basketball, for an adult team, the proposed fee would be $275. And for youth or individual, it'd be $80. Basketball youth team would be $500. Youth team with uniforms, $600. Youth regional, $175, and then rental of Carl Ray Gym at $30. Flag football youth proposing $80. Flag football youth early reg, $65. Late reg, $100, and preseason flag football for youth would be $175.
When we're doing this analysis, let's make sure in the analysis, we do quote recreation over here in one category, construction over here, so we don't separate as... over here in one category, construction over here, so we don't separate it as, I mean, we don't look at it as one great big fee schedule, but recreation should be separated from construction.
So we could probably accomplish that either through the caption, having separate parts, or through the presentation, but we can, you're wanting to be able to vote on them separately?
Yeah, correct.
Okay. Okay, so for Carl Ray Activity Room Rental would be $30, softball for adults would be $350, softball resale would be $7, $40, or $75, and volleyball for youth team would be $325. Volleyball youth team with jerseys, $380, volleyball adult at $225, and then the restroom trailer rental would be $575 daily. For youth summer camp, registration would be $50, weekly fee would be $75, the holding fee would be $25, and then for track would be $90.
Generally, what it looks like is obviously the fee increases on the recreational aspect of this presentation are minor compared to the fees for construction permits relative to constructions. So these don't seem, the increases here don't seem to be an insult so much.
For the Nature Center, birthday parties would be proposed at $100, each additional person would be $5. For admission for four to 12-year-olds would be $3, and for over 12, or for 13-plus would be $5. For an off-site tour would be $125, onsite tour would be $80, each additional person would be $2, and a family pass would be $60. The sports complex, for field rental with no lights, would be $85 a day or $15 an hour. For a lighted field would be $100 a day or $30 an hour. Association field rental for the season would be $600. Now we're moving on to planning. Planning miscellaneous, the design and historic review admin fee would be $120, administrative amendment would be $80, a surcharge for non-digital, like we talked about earlier, would be $120, and a site plan review resubmission would be $280.
So there's currently no fee for non-digital surcharge, and there's no fee for resubmission? So we go from 0 to 280 and 0 to 120?
That's correct, and I will point out that the top two fees we did reduce, didn't want to gloss over that, but yes, the non-digital, I think we talked about that, is not currently a fee. The resubmission, we don't have a resubmission fee, but what we looked at doing was we can keep the site plan fee itself lower by charging for each additional, because if an applicant has everything in order, they submit a site plan, it's all good, they just pay the one fee. If we give them the list of things they need to change, they resubmit it and it hasn't made all those changes, we have to send it out to multiple departments for review again. Takes another week or two for the applicant waiting on those comments, more staff time. They would pay for each of those resubmissions, again with the idea of keeping the costs down for those folks who basically get everything right the first time.
The question mark is, or the comment I'm going to make is, sounds great unless we forget to give them the entire list of things that need to be addressed, and many people have had to come back two or three times, because the first time, they're told to do one, two, and three, and then they come back and though, oh, we forgot to tell you about four, five, and six. So as long as we're efficient on the front end and detail absolutely everything that that person has to do, this makes some sense, but we cannot add to it after the first review and decide, oh, we forgot to tell you that, oh, we didn't catch that, then they should not be expected to pay for things that we didn't designate as issues.
Absolutely, and that's a pretty rare occurrence, but if we do have a situation like that, if they've addressed all of our comments and we find something else, we absolutely would not charge for having them to resubmit something that was something we missed, but that, the, again, that's a pretty rare instance. The examples that I can think of are when, one in particular I can think of, they had to move their building and shift their parking, and so we never told them that they had to move the dumpster. Well, they didn't have to move the dumpster on the first version of the plan, but because of the way the building and parking moved, now the dumpster was in the fire lane, that applicant complained that that was a new comment. Well, it was only new because of the other changes that had to happen on the site.
Because we requested those other changes?
No, that was something that they had changed in that particular example.
Right-of-way encroachment admin would be $130, sidewalk waiver, $75, development plan fee would be $75.
And if I could add on that top one, it's a little misleading, because that is a new fee, but right now, all right-of-way encroachments pay a $450 fee, so it would be more accurate to say that this is 450, because what we've done is created a new administrative process that's a quicker, simpler process. You all changed the ordinance a couple of years ago to allow staff to approve some of these right-of-way encroachments. We never created a new fee for that, and so this remedies that and creates this new lower fee. And then these other two are just new processes that have been created in the past with no fee ever associated with it.
The one that I hear the most about in terms of problems is the Development Review Committee where people will go because no one takes notes, which I'm sure I don't understand, and so then they come, they get ready to move forward, and they go, oh, but you have to do this, and you have to do that, and oh, this also has to happen. Those development review meetings are a great idea, as long as somebody's taken notes and somebody understands that these were the things that were discussed, instead of whether somebody remembers they were discussed or whether several people didn't make it to the Design Review Committee, I mean, the Development Review Committee, so it wasn't a complete approach to that meeting, and that's the biggest concern I have, is because people say, well, they said this, or they didn't say that, or I didn't know this, or I didn't know that. We've got to make that Development Review Committee more official.
Well, we actually do. We have two different processes within that. One is called the consultation, and one's the actual Development Review Commission, Committee. In a Development Review Committee, that's when they have actual plans in hand, and for those, we do take notes. We send out a comprehensive list of notes to the applicant, and all of that's done. We do not do that with a consultation, because that's when someone comes in and says, hey, I have an idea, I want to do X, Y, or Z, maybe doesn't even have a property in mind, and so that's when we can give them ideas of, well, make sure you think about this, or you might want to talk with fire marshal, or, but that's when we don't have an actual plan or an actual property that they have in mind, so it is more just a kind of a general overview of what our requirements are and what applications they would have to fill out, and so you're right, we don't give them a full list of written notes, but for the DRCs, we absolutely do give them notes.
And John, just to piggyback on that, we've received, actually, over the last few weeks, I've actually gotten several compliments from usually outside the city who are working with San Angelo saying it actually was very efficient, one of the best processes they've gone through. They do a good job of documenting all of that. As always, I encourage anyone who has an issue, I need to hear about that, not six months later, but if there's an item going on, then we look into it. If there's a problem on our end, we're going to do our best to fix it. On the other hand, if it's documented and we did it, I'm going to defend that, you know, here's the evidence that shows. So, but yes, if you encounter someone who comes to you with that, please send them our way. I would be happy to visit with them. Please don't wait till six months later. We need to know it as it's going on.
So the next fee is for Fire Department for ambulance standby services. That's currently $400. The proposed fee would be $500, and for additional hours would be $125 per hour. The base would be a four-hour minimum. Cemetery, the fees are concrete box going up to $795, concrete vault to $895, opening and closing for an infant would be $500, outside container setting would be $200. Burial opening and closing would be $700, lot transfer, $150, marker survey would be $150, and hourly overtime would be $250. Overtime on the weekend would be $500, grave opening, $500, set up for a tent, $500, and for an additional tent, $500.
Well, that was aggressive, 150 to 500. Yeah, you don't want to die.
Till we fix the fees.
I'm guessing that's because it's just as much work to put up a second tent as it was for the first tent.
It probably is.
Jeremy, is that correct?
It is correct.
Okay.
And these have been reviewed with the Fairmont Cemetery Board? Go ahead, Jeremy. Do you want to add any comments?
Fairmont Cemetery, no, we have not discussed with the board. We're going to discuss it next week at our board meeting.
So this is just an overview. You'll come back with some comments from the board?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, moving on to civic events. For El Paso, electrical hookup proposed at $50, for the grounds at $100, and a base rate of $200. Facility fees for ticketed events, $5 and under would move to a dollar. Farmer's Market base rate would be $125, Foster Coliseum non-ticketed would be $2,000, and ticketed would be $2,500. Foster Coliseum non-commercial, non-ticketed would be $1,750.
What would be that event?
Sit here.
Normally for a non-commercial, non-ticketed, like a graduation event or something of that nature. And I do want to say before we go through all of our fees, we have not increased fees since 2009, so.
We can do the same thing on civic events, is analyze that separately too, so we don't want to mix apples with oranges in this conversation.
Mayor, speaking to that, would you have any interest in considering the Parks and Rec and the civic events fees today and just bringing back the rest of it later?
Well, I would ask council if they're okay with these fees, if that's something they want to do, or whether they want a total evaluation by category civic events versus programming, athletics versus construction, planning and permits. So if you don't like these fees and feel like you need an opportunity to better understand them, we don't have to prove anything today. I'm assuming Sidney's asking for that, because you've got something coming up that will be in the fiscal '23, '24 budget, that you would need to be quoting people today in terms of them booking these facilities. Is that correct?
Mayor, just as one council member, I'm okay with Parks and Recreation and civic events, yes, ma'am, to approve them today, if that'd be the pleasure of the council.
Does council members have any other vote, any other point of view? What, Harry?
I said I'm okay with it also. I've actually reviewed this with Sid and his particular group some months ago.
What's the comment?
We would just need direction on fire and code as well. That would be the only other.
We haven't done that other than the ambulance, right?
The ambulance is, yes, the ambulance is the only fire fee and this year, and then the code was the one for the mowing that I think you thought was aggressive, so we could bring that one back as well, but I think the fire one is pretty realistic.
The milling one seems out of line, but, all right, so what we could have is a motion, number one, let's take this in pieces. We could have a motion to approve the civic events fees as one motion, and we'll take categories at a time. So the first one could be a motion to approve the civic events proposed fees, seconded by Harry, any public comment on the civic events proposed fees. Go ahead, there's still more? Okay, all right, well, then we're not taking a vote yet, because there's more fees to be looked at, so we might end up changing that motion if there are things that we don't think are correct. So continue, because Sidney said there's more.
Yes, ma'am. McNeese Convention Center for ticketed events would be $3,000, for a convention would be $2750, and then the base rate would be $2,500, a kitchen fee of $200.
So my question, Sidney, is the following, is obviously it's important to keep this facility booked with lots of events. Do these proposed fees put us out of the market for the use of this building compared to other facilities, private facilities that exist in this market?
No, ma'am. So we did a study actually with some comparable cities as well.
Not cities, I mean within our city, meaning if somebody has privately a building that they lease out for events?
No, ma'am. We've also did those two as well, in city as well, and we've compared to other venues that would do, you know, that would be comparable to the convention center as well, and we're still in the same, we're in good market.
Because I hear people comment that it's too expensive to book the McNeese for events, so I want to make sure we haven't put ourselves out of the market with these fees.
No, ma'am.
So you're going to continue to book it?
Yes, ma'am.
Fully?
And we.
Every weekend?
Yes, ma'am.
A pressure, man.
These fees are too, so we're in line, okay?
Mayor, I can attest to, we had a high school class reunion, and one of the things I checked on was different venues. The city was by far the least expensive of other private venues in town, so, and that's been within the last nine months.
Okay, so that's important to know. All right, continue.
Okay, so again, with McNeese, the ballroom base fee would be $2,000, ballroom ticketed would be $2,150, a convention would be $2,000, and then one-third of the ballroom would be $750. Ballroom two-thirds at $1,500, the north meeting room at $850, north one-third would be $300, and two-thirds of the north would be $500.
So those percent increases maintain the same percent increase on each of those categories?
Yes, ma'am. For the most part on those right there, also, I mean, just in general, yes, ma'am.
All right. I'm not sitting here doing the calculation on each one of them, but I need to make sure it's pretty consistent.
So for the entire upstairs at the McNeese would be $500, single room upstairs would be $300, the City Hall East Mezzanine, $250, and the Pecan Creek Pavilion for weekends would be $600.
So that one's pretty aggressive. Just stand there for a while.
So for the Concrete Pavilion, we could probably book that venue twice over, because we're always getting calls for, to do any bookings at the Concrete Pavilion. That's something that us as a staff have discussed, in the future, maybe looking into building another pavilion on that property as well and doing something, because graduation time, summertime, fall time, that Concrete Pavilion stays booked.
Good to know.
Pecan Creek weekdays would be $400, the River Stage base fee would be $1,000, River Stage ticketed, $2,000, and additional staffing needs would be $20.
Additional staffing you can get for $5 or more?
Either. Yes, so that's a per hour as well.
Yes.
Four-hour minimum.
Yeah.
Mayor, it looks like that's all I have for you today.
All right, so with the final review of these civic events numbers, we are going to stay with the motion to approve the civic events new proposed fee schedule. It has, the motion was made by Tommy, it was seconded by Harry. We will open up the conversation for people in the audience who would like to make public comment. With no public comment being offered, then we'll take a vote. Those in favor of the new proposed fees for civic events, say aye.
Aye.
That motion passes 6-0. Then, do we want a separate motion for the ambulance? And, so just the ambulance alone, so I have a motion for the proposed increased fee for the ambulance services.
Come on.
So moved and seconded by the same two people, I got it. So moved and seconded by the same two people. I got it down already. So, public comment, seeing none, hearing none, we'll take a vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
The ambulance fee has been approved 6 to 0. So the rest of those fees will go back from further analysis.
Parks and Recreation.
Oh, parks and rec, with elimination of lots of things.
I move approval of parks and rec.
Okay. Any public comment on those items? Seeing none, hearing none, we'll take a vote. All those in favor of the parks and rec, say aye.
Aye.
None opposed, that passes 6-0.
Thank you.
Okay?
And that does cover everything with the exception of planning permitting and code.
Planning and permits and code.
Okay, very good.
And I would hope you'd have a chance to go back to the Development Review Committee.
Sorry, and cemetery.
We need.
I need those cemetery ones discussed with the cemetery board before it comes back here.
No problem.
I want them to be well informed on that before we take a vote on it, and then we'll bring it back. And then I want to make sure that we have an opportunity to meet with the Development Review Committee on the proposed fee schedules, so they're well-versed before it comes back to council. All right, with that, we will move on to the next item on the agenda, and that is item E. First reading and public hearing of an ordinance amending the budget for the fiscal year beginning October 1, 2022, and ending September 30, 2023, for capital projects and an additional full-time planning position.
Yes, ma'am, so because our FTE count is adopted in the budget ordinance, we have to bring this back to you anytime we want to try to add an additional FTE. John has a proposal for his department whereby he would convert one position into two lower-level positions, and that one position would almost cover the entire cost of the two lower-level positions. It would cost an additional like $7,600 in next fiscal year's budget to do this. But for the current year, you're seeing no revenue or expense associated with it, because we can probably find savings within the department to cover the cost for the remainder of this year if he does fill those positions.
So the issue is whether you can find that person, or those two persons, right? Because the biggest challenge is finding people to fill the positions that are open in the planning department, so.
That's right, and that's one of the reasons we're proposing this, is that the the current vacant position is a high-level planning planner position. And what we're proposing is two planning technicians, which has lower, lower requirements for that, and so.
And higher efficiency?
Yeah, I believe so, and we'll be able to spread the, spread the activities and have the the actual professional planners do the higher-level work. And some of the things that they're doing now, like stuffing envelopes to send out mail notifications on zoning cases, more of that can be done by these planning technicians.
That's how we have cost savings to lower these fees.
Absolutely.
There you go.
Okay, with that, keep going.
Yes, ma'am, and this budget amendment is to budget for the CO proceeds of $13,415,000. You saw this before a few times now, came to you in February of last year to allow us to go to the Texas Water Development Board to receive this loan from them, low-interest loan. And so this is just now issuing for those proceeds.
And we're well aware of this, so there shouldn't be an issue there.
That is all I have for those.
So do we need an approval on that?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so may I have a motion? Tommy's going to make that one. Lucy, you're going to get the second on that one, because I missed you on the other one. And any public comment? Seeing none, we'll take a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes 6-0. We will now go into the closed session. The executive session under the provision of Government Code Title V, Open Government Ethics, subtitle A, Open Government, Chapter 551, Open Meetings, Subchapter D, Exceptions to Requirement That Meetings Be Open Under the Following Sections, A. Section 551.072, Deliberations About Real Property Regarding Commercial Lease and Possible Sale of Lots 2 and 3, Block 1, Group Middle Concho, Lake Nazaway, Edition. We will return following that conversation. We'll have a go back and forth, but I want you to sit. Doing that. Okay, we'll call this meeting back to order at 11:55 a.m. There is no announcements from our closed session, so we will move into approving board nominations, of which there is one, for the zoning Board of Adjustment, Mimi Clark, SMD 4 to first term, ending January 2025. May I have a motion for?
Hey, mayor, you've got also the Concho River Water Master.
No, sir, we don't.
We do not?
Do not.
Okay.
Yeah.
Well, I move to approve on the motion.
Okay.
For zoning.
May I have a second?
Second.
Second by Tommy. Any public comment? With none, we'll take a vote. All those in favor of, Mimi, you want to make any comments? Mimi. Okay, all right, all right, all right. We'll take a vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes 6-0. May I have now a motion for German?
I'll move.
Second.
Any public comment? If not, we'll take a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes 6-0. Remind everybody, we meet on May 25 for Strategic Planning Meeting.
Twenty-six, actually.
On the 26th, at 8:30 a.m.
Is that in this room or East Mezzanine?
Here. I like to do them here. Okay, with that, we are adjourned.